Joining board of the City of New Brunswick with number twenty-six, twenty-two. I will begin the poll call. Letzim, Minaías.
Here.
Evelyn Estona. Charlie McNair. Daira Torres. John Zimmerman.
Here.
Mike Toblin.
Here.
Charlie Gassaneda. Michael Bellman.
Here.
Matt Ferguson.
Here.
Nancy Coppola. John Cox.
Here. Public announcer.
All right, please be advised in our requirements, the Open Public Meeting Act is implied and satisfied at the annual notice, sufficient notice on the time of closing time of all public meetings of the zoning board of the City of Brunswick. As filed with the City Board, that the placement appropriate bulletin board posted in fact, best to do will see callable to the public. Obviously, City of New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has transmitted sufficient notice for the City of New Brunswick.
Please reply.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Men to the board slide twenty-two.
All right, so first July eligible voters, John Zimmerman, Mike Toblin, Michael Bellman, Matt Ferguson, and John Cox.
Motion to approve.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mike Toblin?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
Yes. For the always like second, twenty-two.
Eligible voters are. Yeah, no, 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 let's see, was also there, so. John Zimmerman, Mike Toblin, Mike Bellman, Matt Ferguson, and John Cox.
I make motion to approve.
That, Mike Toblin?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that question.
Okay. Letzim?
Yes.
You. John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Toblin?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
John Cox.
Resolution of memorialization, Ronaldo and Moran, Inc. of B, one oh eight Sanford Street, block two thirty-six, lot twenty-eight point zero one, ZB dash two zero two-two dash zero four.
Same eligible voters as August.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And that was John Zimmerman?
I'll second.
Letzim, Minaías?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Toblin?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
John Cox.
Public hearing, community asset preservation corporation.
Yeah, so, Jared Cox.
I'll just get back to.
No, 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 this is a request for an extension of approval by this project. And actually, we have, and Mr. Solomon can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have four requests for extension, including this project. If I recall correctly, we have forty-five Remson Avenue, five oh one Easton Avenue, two oh three Hamilton Street, and two oh five Hamilton Street. So a lot of them came in later today.
I saw two of them from Mr. Clark's office, I don't, I didn't see the other two, but a simple request.
They're all, they're all four for him.
Right, and a request for extension is within the sound of discretion of the board. We have their, uh, what is your argument? Do we have to read you twenty-two?
Um, I prefer.
Would we have to?
It's tedious if it is the public best to do it separately.
Okay. So we're going to, uh, for the community asset preservation corporation, forty-five Remson, block one forty, lot four point zero one, ZB two zero two zero dash one hundred, for credit or money here, extension prior approvals pursuant to JSA forty, phone fifty-five, D dash fifty-two. Memorialization, resolution, private with the top of the subject.
Mr. Chair, real quick, I just need to recuse from the matters.
The record is reflected, we're accusing all four, about all fours, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I make motion to extend.
Yeah, I'll second.
Letzim, Minaías?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Toblin?
Yes.
Michael Bellman?
Yes.
Yes. Again, I don't have the others in front of me, which, yeah, I'll be included.
Because I didn't know that we had to do that level of.
Okay.
So, you want to wait a minute to these, or?
Probably best, like I said, they're, you're within your discretion, but they must be the record.
Yeah, I think it's best that we just wait until next meeting.
Then we'll just move on to the.
The record is like, will carry, please ask any question about deadlines, everyone back.
So that'll be five oh one Easton Avenue, which would, Francis and Parker Homes, two oh three Hamilton Street, which was, if I recall correctly, a multi-unit building on Hamilton Street, and then two oh five Hamilton Street, which was a mixed-use building with the ground floor. I just wanted to put that into the record, will carry till next meeting on all of them, but I just wanted to give a quick summary on them to the record.
Thank you.
All right.
Next up is Hoffman Housing Associates, LLC, seventy-five Melton Street, block six one, zero six point zero two, P O lot, one point oh three, ZB two zero two-two dash zero six. Preliminary final site plan application with DNC variances to revise the lease line, which will reduce the site area to twenty thousand two hundred and sixty square feet. This site was previously approved for a six-story, sixty-six age-restricted building, fourteen parking spaces, in twenty seventeen. Zoning District, R, Dastic, public family residential, not Hellsburg Square.
Members of the board, Thomas Kelsall, on behalf of the applicant, Hoffman Housing Associates. The application that's before you this evening is the culmination of what is somewhat of a long history for this project. Member of some of the board, you may recall that this site used to have the old rectangular building that was known as Hoffman Pavilion. And as part of the overall redevelopment of Memorial Homes area, this building was demolished. That, and it previously held four of the housing units, some of those which were public housing units, technically, they went and moved into public housing units. My client was ultimately designated by the Housing Authority as the redevelopment for this site, and as you know, this site is actually a property that's owned by federal government, Housing and Urban Development section. And again, my client was selected in order to develop this as replacement housing essentially for what was removed. The original application before the board was heard in two thousand and ten. In two thousand and ten, there was an approval that was granted for a project that was somewhat larger and with additional units and a higher building height. That project was, through a lengthy process of attempting to receive the necessary tax credits to make the project economically feasible, ultimately was not able to secure what was necessary in terms of the tax credits, as well as some other issues associated with approval development. So the project didn't get off the ground until late in the year two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, at which time the project was revised, the prop, the site, I'm sorry, the building was reduced in size slightly, and the board ultimately heard this application in two thousand seventeen, and granted preliminary and final site plan approval with a series of variances, including a use variance, height variance, FAR variances, as D variances, and then a number of bulk variances that were associated with it. Those approvals are still active. They are something that the applicant could move forward with, including all of the D variances and the C variances and the site plan. However, my client, in reviewing this with the Housing Authority and looking at the overall strategic plan for the site and what would necessarily fly for the tax credit financing, and also trying to be a little bit more sensitive to what is an underground culvert that is located on the site underneath this property. There was a decision made to revise the site plan again, and the good news is the financing is in place. So the, the purpose of this application this evening is to have the board review the new site plan, understand the reasons for, for what was done, and to essentially reaffirm the approval with those modifications that were in place now. Again, I want to emphasize to you that the actual variances, the D variances and the bulk variances already exist, so my client does have the benefit of those variances, except for one, and there is a slight increase to the impervious coverage variance. All the other variances that were granted, which are still in place, are now before this board either remaining the same or being reduced in terms of their variation. So I think it was important for the board to understand the background of how we got here, and the fact that my client has rights under those, that original application in two thousand seventeen, but feels this is a better plan. Now, I just want to, I will identify those variances for you, I know we'll have them testify to, but again, as far as proofs are concerned, we, we are going to screen one then, because as I, as I say to you, they're already in place, but I know some members of the board here tonight were not on the board in two thousand seventeen, and I think it's just helpful to understand what variances were granted and what's still remaining. First, once again, there is a D use variance, because this is a mid-级 residential building, which is not permitted in that zone. That's still the case, this is still a mid-级 residential building, it actually is the same height, same number of units that was granted in two thousand seventeen. There is an FAR D variance, which at the time was three point seven point one, which is now reduced to three point two point one, so there is actually a reduction in the variation for that D variance. There was a parking variance granted for, to allow fourteen spaces, that again is what the plan is providing for, the fourteen spaces, and that is, that remains unchanged. The last D variance is a height variance, which has actually been lowered from seventy-one feet to sixty-six feet. So these now are more in conformance with what the zoning board has indicated. The lot width and lot depth remain the same because they're, it's an existing lot, because again, this property is being developed through a lease line. The minimum front yard setback on Nielsen Street has been slightly made better, it's now one point nine feet versus one point three before, and the front yard setback on Hildebrand Way also has been reduced by a small amount, one point seven feet, which was previous to one point one feet. The maximum building coverage, which was previously approved, is, has been reduced to sixty-three percent to sixty-one percent. And finally, the only variance that's being increased is the impervious coverage from nine, from eighty-three percent to ninety-one percent. So again, as an overview, the project itself is financially ready to go. My client, if the board were to find that they didn't like this site plan, would simply go back and build the other plan, but I think we will be able to identify the fact to you that this is really a better plan, not only for the project, the residents, but also for the city with regard to the engineering aspects of it. There's another aspect of this that I just want to touch upon. We have been in contact with the Mount Zion AME Church. The Mount Zion Church had had an interest originally when they were notified of this project, in understanding the scope of it, the impact it may have on AME, as you know, because they're directly across the street. And they had expressed some concerns about initially, actually in correspondence even to the board. So as a result of that, we had an opportunity, my client, myself, John Clark from the Housing Authority, Mayor Cahill, who hosted the meeting, and Reverend Carmen, who is the, now the pastor of the AME Church. And we, we discussed a number of items that are directly impacted by this project, but also that really don't have anything to do with us that the pastor wanted to speak to the city about. And I'm glad to report that we've come to an understanding with regard to a few of those issues, which I think will benefit everyone, and therefore, Pastor Carmen is not here, because he's happy. So, and, and I just want to just explain some of them briefly. I know the city is looking at Hildebrand Way as a resident permit parking district, because I know there was concern that AME has expressed that there happens to be, you know, regular infiltration for parkers who park there, who stay there for the day because they either use public transportation, they go to the train station, believe it or not, it was a little bit of a distance. But that's been an ongoing concern that they have had in that location. So if the city does resident permit parking, it not only benefits AME, but it benefits my client, I mean, the building right there themselves. There's also been an understanding that Mayor Cahill, through his good offices, has reached for the AME to be able to park during services on property that's beyond this location, but that, that was something that AME was very interested in having some, some ability to park off-site for their services. So that's been accomplished. As far as my client and AME is concerned, we've had discussions on generally two matters. One is with regard to naming rights for the building, although it's premature right now to identify that, but there has been an understanding that has generally been reached with Mount Zion AME and my client with regard to naming rights in the building. And number two, AME offers a number of social service programs. Those programs range from, you know, food instability to counseling services, support services generally for family services, and Pastor Carmen was very much interested in having a formal understanding with my client to offer those services to the residents that will be living in this housing facility. And that was gladly accepted and appreciated by my client, because it's going to serve residents that are living there, and as Pastor Carmen and I both understood, that a number of those residents will probably be parishioners already, so, and that is true when the original building was there, because they, there are a number of parishioners from Mount Zion AME. So with that basic understanding, which I think was very helpful, not only for my client, because as Pastor Carmen indicated, they want to be good neighbors, we want to be good neighbors, and those, just those few elements are going to go a long way in helping not only my client to be able to, you know, have, have a facility that's operating appropriately, but also with Mount Zion wanting to be a good neighbor and providing services to us. So I wanted to go on record with that, I know that there was a letter that had been sent to the board, where Pastor Carmen indicated that he's perfectly satisfied, and I was advised that I can make that representation to the board this evening. So I know I'm long-winded on these things sometimes, but I think it's helpful, not only in understanding the context of the relationship with the church, but also to understand how we got to where we are, and those variances that actually still exist today. So with, without any questions from the board, I would call my first witness.
Let me just ask, I'm about to ask if we can, is there any member of the board that has a conflict with this application before we continue passing them, please go ahead.
At this time, I would call Mr. Noah Freiberg for testimony. And I want you, you can just stand here. Oh, sure, thank you. You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Noah, you are a representative of Penrose Properties, which is the underlying redevelopment side of that, correct?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, about.
Mr. Freiber, can you please state your name and his latter last name for the record?
Noah Freiber, F R E I B E R G.
You swear up to the testimony you're about to give with the truth, the whole truth, and the link of the truth?
I do.
So Noah, what's your position at Penrose?
I am a senior developer.
Okay, in that capacity, you're familiar with the application that's before the board this evening, and I believe you also testified in two thousand seventeen, didn't you?
Yes.
Could you just give us a general overview of the Penrose side of this equation and their, there's a little bit of the track history that Penrose has with regard to affordable housing development, and give us a just, general overview of what Penrose's vision is for this building and some of the practical issues such as services that are being provided?
Sure, so just a little bit about myself before I get started, I'm a senior developer, like I mentioned, I've been with Penrose for ten years, but I've been in the affordable housing industry for over fifteen, so I spent a better part of my career working in affordable housing redevelopment. Been with Penrose for the past ten years, Penrose is a fifty-year-old private real estate development company, we're based out of Philadelphia, but we have offices across the eastern seaboard and some of the center part of the United States, Boston, New York, Atlanta, Baltimore as well. In its history, Penrose has developed twenty thousand units in over two hundred and fifty communities, and the majority of that portfolio is affordable housing, which is, which is our main specialization. And locally here in Brunswick, Penrose has developed over seven hundred units, and has previously developed three of those projects of seven hundred units are one hundred percent affordable housing projects, so Penrose has experience in the city and with one hundred percent affordable housing. Penrose's relationship started with the Housing Authority for this particular project back in two thousand nine, as Mr. Kelsall said, the Housing Authority wanted to demolish the old Hoffman Pavilion project, which was one hundred percent public housing, moved some tenants to another location, which Penrose also built, and then rebuilt Hoffman, a little bit smaller size. That product, that building, excuse me, was demolished in two thousand ten, and the plan for this project is one hundred percent affordable housing, the main way one hundred percent affordable housing is built today in New Jersey is with the low-income housing tax credit, which is issued through the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Financing. So the building was demolished in two thousand ten with plans to rebuild on that site rather quickly. Unfortunately, the tax credits are allocated through what's called a qualified allocation plan, which is just a sort of a guide, a scoring system for these competitive credits, which, there's about four applications every year for one award, so it's highly competitive, and this, this point system is what guides how the state sort of fairly issues these credits to different municipalities across the state. New Brunswick, for different reasons, that sort of aren't relevant for this conversation, was not competitive over the years for this nine percent tax credit funding, and some years, from two thousand ten to two thousand, you know, seventeen, they actually didn't have funding, so the project waited a long time, even though it had the plans to get this funding. In two thousand seventeen, we redesigned the building to try to be more competitive, and we finally were successful in two thousand nineteen. So the plan was to have this project, you know, the same, same project built since two thousand ten, and along the way, costs have continued to rise, and then, and then COVID hit, costs, you know, went on an even higher trajectory upward, and the cost for the project that we had in two thousand nineteen really became infeasible, and so we had to go look for other sources of funds, which we have procured. We have an award from the Federal Home Loan Bank, and we're looking at the EDA's aspire program to help fill the gap. And redesigning this project to be more efficient is part of that measure to make the project feasible, it will, not only will make the project more efficient and, and have some of the positive benefits that Mr. Kelsall mentioned earlier, but it also reduces the cost for the project while still providing everything that we've been committed to do. So that's why we're, that's why we're here today. Just a little bit about the project, as Mr. Kelsall said, it's a sixty-six unit project, and six stories, sixty-one one bedrooms, and five two bedrooms, and one of those bedrooms will include a superintendent that will live onsite to help service the project. The property will have open floor plans, modern kitchen with energy stars, spacious closets, it'll be fully energy star and net zero homes from an energy perspective, there'll be a laundry facility on each floor, and onsite management on the first floor. The residents of this property will be senior, fifty-five plus. Twenty-six of the units will remain public housing with the New Brunswick Housing Authority. Fourteen of the units of the fifty-five will be supported with project-based vouchers, so they will also be Housing Authority residents from a different sort of program within their, within their housing authority. And then the other twenty-five units will be just what we call tax credit only units, not, not with the Housing Authority, but those will be rented to individuals at sixty percent or less of the hourly median income of Middlesex County. And the whole project will be less than sixty percent of the hourly median income of Middlesex County, but those vouchers from the Housing Authority will support individuals at very low incomes, so the majority of the residents, these seniors, will be at thirty percent or less of hourly median income. And just to sort of add on to that point, these individuals are typically making less than twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a year, and, and with being senior, the majority of these residents do not drive a car, don't have a car. Penrose has a man.
I'm sorry, I was.
Penrose has a management arm, Penrose Management Company, that manages about nine thousand units and will manage this property. As I mentioned, this property will have two full-time employees, a property manager, which will work at the property Monday through Friday, nine to five, standard business hours, and a superintendent that will live in the unit on the first floor and be available to service the property, including emergencies, you know, twenty-four seven. In addition to that support onsite, Penrose Management Company structures such that it has regional and executive support at, at all levels for all of our properties, so that this property is not only supported just by the local staff, but regional managers and regional maintenance supers, as well as staff that are filled up your property. And then just lastly, to touch a little bit on the supportive services, the residents of Hoffman will have a variety of transportation options living there. The first one, as part of our tax credit application commitment to the state, in order to get funding for this project, we committed to contracting with a private rideshare company that once a week will take residents on, throughout the city, to, to different amenities or services that they need, such as food shopping, pick up their prescriptions, go to a local event, and, and, you know, sort of that, where they go week to week, or what, what route they take is really going to be dependent upon the residents and, you know, who moves in there, but they do have that option, we will contract with them as part of the project. Also, the county provides services to seniors, and Penrose will contract or, you know, be in contact with the county to provide residents that option as well. And then there are two NJ Transit bus stops nearby that residents can walk to and access the New Jersey Transit system, so these residents will have plethora of transportation options living in this location. And then additionally, Penrose Management Company has a supportive service arm, and in all of our properties, we provide case management and service coordination through third-party providers, we make relationships with local providers, nonprofits, municipalities, and counties, so Middlesex and New Brunswick provide a strong amount of options for seniors, will make connections with the county for food and ride programs and other senior benefits, the city's programs that they have for seniors, and then we try to provide other benefits for healthcare, such as having, having medical, having medical groups come in and provide just sort of basic screening, to make sure they know about their health, not, not necessarily to provide heavy-duty care, but that they know where they're at and inform them that maybe they need to go to a senior, or sort of just keep an eye on them as, as they get older and age in place in this project. So I think that's about it if I covered everything.
I have no questions for no-
If I may, just one, I missed, you were saying, if I didn't catch the numbers for the bedroom breakout?
Oh, sure. It's sixty-one-one bedrooms.
Right.
I'm sorry, sixty, six-zero, one bedrooms.
Right.
And six-
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms.
Which is-
Thank you. And one of those two bedrooms is for a super. So there's sixty-six total, but sixty-five are for the four-
Understood.
Thank you.
Can you remember, the board, how many questions for this witness? I remember the freshman board. You ask one of this, please.
Sorry, it comes and goes. At this time, I would call Michael Weselowski. Last name, if you could. Of course, you had to come now.
Can you please state your names, by your last name, for the record?
Sure. My name is Michael Weselowski. That's W-E-S-E-L-O-S-K.
Do you swear in front of the testimony you're about to give, is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Michael, you're a licensed professional engineer of the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes.
And in that capacity, you are familiar with the engineering aspect of the application for the board this evening?
Yes, I am.
Could you give the board then the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Sure. I am a project manager, I own a engineering partners, and a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing since two thousand five and have provided testimony in front of land's boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
If you could, please, and feel free, I know you have the boards, if you could use the whistle over here. No, sorry about that.
That's okay.
And I'll allow you to just go run through your engineering testimony without me asking specific questions, so I'm not calling more.
Sounds good.
Can everyone see this okay? Can we relocate?
Can you, um, can you angle it so the public can see it better, so kind of like parallel for the-
Sure.
All right. First exhibit for you this evening is titled Hoffman Pavilion, existing area. I can mark that A1. If that's appropriate. The subject property is located in the approximate center of the sheen, known as Block 10602, part of Lot 1.03. I say "part of" being that the property in its entirety is approximately five hundred and four acres and owned by the City Housing Authority. The application for you before you this evening is only regarding an approximately half-acre portion being the open lawn area, and that's designated by the subject in this line. Giving you some location, project has fronted along Nielsen Street to the west, across from which is an existing lot of parking lot. Water Street to the north, across from which is the Mount Zion Church. An additional residential development to the east and south. Further east, you would encounter Ratty Team and Rag River. Now to my next exhibit. Title Hoffman Pavilion, Segment R. I'll mark this A2. As you've heard from my predecessors, the project includes the proposed construction of a single six-story, sixty-six-unit residential building, which will contain sixty-one-bedroom units and six-two-bedroom units, one of those being a non-age-restricted superintendent unit. Kind of give you a big picture of the more important shape that would be since the prior applications, say the first of which, the prior building occupied some of this space here over the parking. That portion of the building has essentially been pushed west in order to pull it away from the underground live room culvert that you heard Mr. Kelso, excuse me, alluded to earlier. A second portion of the building's ground floor, and you'll see better in my next exhibit, we just located here, it's actually been removed so that only the higher floors remain. And this enabled us to provide improved design to meet the required design regulations of the flat area. And finally, the exterior terrace is now a bit more suited and better designed for the residents with a southerly exposure. Then moving to my third and final exhibit this evening, which I'll mark A3. This exhibit presents the same information or the same view as my prior exhibit, but this one gives you a more detailed view of what's happening at the ground level, whereas my prior exhibit was in a true area view. As you can see, the proposed fourteen parking spaces are provided on the south end of the property. Vehicle traffic would enter from the east from John Street, move in a one-way direction and exit to the west along Nielsen Street. The perimeter of the project has existing five-foot sidewalk that will be replaced in kind as part of the improvements. The primary point of pedestrian entry would be from Nielsen Street, near the approximate center of the facade here, where you have a double door into a vested view. Moving to the fourteen parking spaces before, just giving you a breakdown of those, two are ADA accessible, and three are electric vehicle charging station made ready to meet the recently passed ordinance in two thousand twenty-one. The ADA stalls are sized to eight foot wide by eighteen foot deep per the ADA regulations. And also, we provide required adjacent access aisles. The remaining stalls are sized at eight and a half feet wide by eighteen feet deep, whereas a nine-foot width is required by ordinance, and again, this relief was granted with the prior two thousand seventeen application. Another amenity that's been added to the project with this iteration is bicycle storage. First, we have, and you will probably hear Mr. Peacock allude to next, is in the southwest corner of the building that you see here is one interior bicycle storage room, that I believe if you can hold six bicycles. And then from the opposite corner, northeast, we have a bike rack that's designed to hold seven bicycles. And while this bike rack is open to the exterior on the sides, it is below the covered portion of the building, so it's protected from the elements above. Signage, we have one facade-mounted proposed sign along and near the Nielsen Street, excuse me, main entry. This would be an address sign sized to meet your ordinance at approximately nine square feet. Loading in terms of your typical Amazon, UPS, FedEx delivery would happen via Nielsen Street, where trucks would park, enter the main building entrance, and be able to drop off any deliveries to the adjacent package room. Move-in move-out operations would be a management area. We've allocated a ten-by-thirty area adjacent to the driveway that can accommodate the required size of moving vehicle that residents would need in this building, with that causing detriment or obstruction of the through access aisle for the project. It's important, again, to remember that with the proposed use, the building's not anticipated to see a lot of turnover. You would see that loading area get used really upon building opening, but not all that often afterwards. Trash and recycling would be contained within the building, within the room located on its eastern side. It can be wheeled out via the double door here, down the sidewalk and ramp for curbside pickup, which we would anticipate once a week. Heard Mr. Kelso discuss the variances that have been previously granted to the project. I will touch on the one variance that has been slightly exacerbated with this application after getting impervious coverage, which has been taken from previously approved eighty-three percent and now proposed at ninety-one percent. And the reason for that, you've actually already heard, previously, the building occupied some of the same space as the parking and driveway out here. That area of the building has essentially been pushed west and north, and the northern portion is occupied overall with previously or otherwise pervasive area. Touching on stormwater management, the project is considered a major development for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's definition. Therefore, to meet the water quality requirements, we've proposed a section of pervious pavement along the wreckage zones, proximally at this location here, to treat the required motor vehicle surfaces. Water quantity requirements, we met the underground storm tank system, located approximately here underneath the proposed driveway. These systems combined would ultimately discharge into, again, that live room culvert that generally traverses the southern portion of the project limits. Utilities, the building will be serviced by public sewer and water, which will connect into the existing infrastructure to the north within Hillibrand Lake. The project also includes a generator and transformer to service electrical items. Lighting, the site is primarily lit by existing lights along all three frontages, all of which will be being to be used. There are some building metal lights proposed along Nielsen Street, John Street, and the exterior terrace, simply to illuminate the required doorways and pedestrian access areas. There's also underbuilding lighting here within the covered portion of the driveway and parking. Finally, landscaping, as you can clearly see shown here in green, there are nine street trees, excuse me, nine trees proposed on the project, eight of which are street trees, and the building is wrapped nicely by foundation pointings along its perimeter. Mr. Kelso, that includes my direct testimony. I have no further questions for Mr. Weselowski, if anyone wishes to-
Can you remember, the board, if there were any questions for this wit- for this witness?
Just one, the box on the bottom right?
Yep.
Can you speak to what that is?
Yes, that's an existing garage that remains there today. That's not proposed, nor is it-
So is the main entrance, is it on Nielsen for the residents who are going in, or are they coming in sort of in the parking lot area?
There is access from the parking lot, but the main entrance is designed to be from Nielsen Street.
So when Amazon and everyone else is delivering, where are those guys putting their trucks?
We envisioned that they were parked along any available space on Nielsen Street, simply given its proximity to that pantry.
Any other questions? I'm seeing enough. Your next witness, please.
At this time, I would call Mr. Keith Peacock for testimony.
Can you state your names, by your last name, for the record?
Yes. Keith Peacock, P-E-A-C-O-A-K.
Do you swear in front of the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you're a licensed professional architect of the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That's correct.
In that capacity, you're familiar with the design and construction and the proposal for the latest alliteration of this building?
I am.
Could you give the board then the benefit of your professional qualification experience?
Sure. Graduated from Drusel University, bachelor's in architecture major, licensed in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Maryland. I'm a principal with Kitchen and Associates. We're located in Collinswood, and many buildings here, and those we have, we've testified before this board, East Orange, Jersey City, Porcepani, Camden, quite a number of boards in the past.
I would offer, Mr. Peacock?
You'll accept him as a next for the board.
If you could, then Keith, let me ask you a specific question. If you can give us a general overview of the building, interior and exterior?
Sure.
Oh, yes. I have one, two, and three.
Can you fill this? A four? This is a ground floor plan of the building, and what's been pointed out before, that this is this culvert that we've been talking about that exists. There's an easement, and there's this concrete structure that's in the middle of it. And what we determined was that while it sounds all great, where it actually ended up where the re-easement is, we, our previous building, we were very close to the foundation of that culvert, and we had some concerns about our ability to not interfere with that structure while we were doing the construction of the building under our last iteration. We also had a structure that was here, this is the flowville zone on here where, if you recall, the last flood that we had in this area, this whole area was also underwater. And so the previous structure was above that, and there were some concerns from building science that having, having a building on top of flowville zone was just not, not a great answer. So addressing both of those concerns is what kind of led us to this redesign and reconfiguration. So the parking lot stayed pretty much the same as what we had previously, but we pushed the whole structure this way that was, was open here and kind of went around this way. We sort of flip-flopped it the other direction. And the entrance was here, we moved it about twenty feet closer up to Hillibrand, and moved the stair tower down from sort of flip-flop this. It allowed us to improve this whole ground force scenario. It brought our patio to the south, where now we have a southern exposure for that, so it really improved the outdoor patio space as well. And so moving inside, we have a fitness room, you come in, we have a package room, and we have our leasing office, and these guys have eyes right on the lobby folks coming in, or mail area. But if you're parking in the garage, there's also an entrance where folks can come in here. And then we have our supers unit and our old back of house, trash and maintenance area, the electric and water rooms. And then we have a ramp that brings us down because this is elevated above our floodplain, brings us back down to the, to grade, the trash can come out the backside here. Transformer, our generator, located in the back here. This is a second story above, so the ground floor is really exposed to grade, and the building structure is all above there. Bike storage is in here, we've got some other storage for outdoor maintenance things that come in. And then the community room that also overlooks this patio space allows residents to move between those two spaces on the, on the ground floor. Moving up to our typical floor, A5. So we have one-bedroom units that move around, and we have a two-bedroom that's in the corner, and our elevator core remains constant, and our two egress stairs located in the center of the building, laundry in the middle, and trash, it's over top of our trash that drops down. So we have daylighting in the corridor for this back room, so some nice improvements to the configuration of the building in terms of how that serves the residents. Going to A6. This is a view of the elevation. One of the things that we did in this was to relook at, from the last iteration, we had some roof structures that were a little higher. This scheme allows us to break the building height down a little bit, simplified it, again, all in how we can simplify the structure to get better financials out of it, to make the project work from the developer's side. So a lot of brick and party colors, really a lot of warm earth tones, and simplified architecture as we, as we move around. So this is Nielsen, this is Hillibrand, so these two faces sit like that, this one is Nielsen, this one's Hillibrand, and around. And a garage exit only on Nielsen, and then the next is where we come in the backside. So this is A7. So this is looking at the back of the building from John Street, and sort of, sort of kind of a weird perspective, because you've got this part of the building that's further back off the street, and this part is right on the street, and this is looking down the side of Hillibrand. And then this side is looking at what is facing the edge of the property at the end of the apartments that are on that side. And so there's, there's a little bit of a canteen wall here that is part of the remnants of the old triangle building that was there, the old Hoffman Pavilion that was torn down, and that, as you had mentioned, that garage is, is on that corner that this wall ties into, because that part of the site's a little higher up as we, as we come back up towards Nielsen Street. Those are the elevations. And then we do this as A8. So this is an artist's rendering of what it would look like on the, on the corner of Hillibrand and Nielsen. So we have the, the main entrance is, sideways is, is back over here, there were parking lot coming out, exit only on this side, and then headed down, down Hillibrand, down, down that direction. The final view, which will do with A9. And this is looking the other direction along Nielsen with the south-facing wall and looking back at our driveway exit, our entrance, and looking back up towards the church on the, on the north end of the site. and looking back up towards the church on the, on the north end of the site. And that's what we have.
Any questions? A member of the board or professional, any questions for this witness? Same enough, your next witness.
If this time I would call Ms. Kate Keller for testimony?
Hi, could you make sure I'm with the board?
Please state your name, by your last name for the record.
Sure, Kate Keller, last name is K E L L E R.
Do you swear or tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you're a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
In that capacity, you've had an opportunity to review the original variances that were approved by the board that are existing today, the additional variance that's been increased, as well as an overview of the use and the overall history of the project itself, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Could you give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Sure. As mentioned, I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, as well as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I'm a principal with the firm of Phillips Price Greigle Lady Hughes LLC based in Hoboken, New Jersey, which I've been with for about 10 years, and I've been qualified as an expert witness before this board and your planning board and about 65 municipalities in the state.
Well, except for the next board.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hey, if you could, I know that we've indicated to the board a few times that the variances are already in place, but I think it's helpful if you could just give an overview of those variances, the impact that the revisions to this plan had with respect to it, and I think that, again, being able to reassert the proofs associated with those variances.
Sure. So as has been discussed, you know, this project has gone through several iterations since 2010, including two applications before the zoning board of adjustment in the city. And at that time, over both 2010 and 2017, D variances were granted relating to the use, minorized apartments which are not permitted in this zone, the height of the building, which at now is 66 feet where 35 feet is permitted, so that is of course greater than 10% higher than what's permitted, so a D6 variance was required in that context. And then finally, the floor area ratio, which initially was approved at 3.93, which you know has now been reduced, it was reduced in 2017 to 3.7, and we are now proposing 3.2. So that's a relatively substantial decrease over what was previously approved. But essentially, because the nature of this project has not changed, it remains a 100% affordable housing project for seniors, which is also, I would note, an inherently beneficial use as was determined at the initial approval. All of these variances, the variances that were initially granted over the last 10 years or 12 years at this point, do still remain valid in our opinion because the nature of the project has not changed, and the project at this point is actually in better compliance with several of those. So I will, you know, I'm going to just summarize the C variances that were also approved and what we were doing here tonight, and then I'm going to kind of just touch upon the positive and negative criteria towards, as I get towards the end. So then in addition to the D variances, several C variances were approved, and these generally carry through even though the numbers might have changed a little bit over time, but from 2010, 2017, and to the present, C variances have been granted to permit minimum lot area, which as was mentioned is based on the lease line, so it's kind of, it's not the whole property here, and at this point, we are, it is slightly higher than what was approved in 2017, which is 20,260 square feet versus 20,167, which is just based on a change to the site plan and the arrangement between the applicant and the city housing authority. So in addition, variances that we are still carrying forward include minimum front yard setback from both Nielsen and Hillibrand streets, which were respectively in 2017 granted to permit 1.3 feet and 1.1 feet, where the new design that you have just seen is proposing 1.9 feet from Nielsen and 1.7 feet from Hillibrand. The other variances include maximum building coverage, which has been reduced from 2017 where it was granted at 63%, where 25% is permitted, and is now at 61%, and that is, you know, as Steve Kurt has related to the changes in the, how the building has shifted on the site to better enhance the flood safety of the property, and also related to the reduced floor area ratio. So there's also a variance that was granted in, again, both 2010 and 2017 related to off-street parking. This is a property that has 66 units, and because of the unit mix, the RSIS standards which apply to all residential properties in the city, it runs with required, I believe, 120 parking spaces, and the variance was previously granted to permit 14 parking spaces, which is still what is proposed here. And again, you know, the baseline, the context for that variance and the context for this project has not changed besides the, even with the iterations of the project, where this is still, you know, this is a senior housing project where you've heard that based on operationally, they're more, less like, residents are less likely to have vehicles, there's other parking options in the vicinity, including parking structures, and this is also a transit-heavy site that also has walkability in terms of, you know, if residents are mobile enough, they are able to walk to a grocery store, they can walk to a pharmacy, and for those who may not be able to or choose not to, the applicant will be providing this type of ride sharing and shuttle service as needed to help the residents. So it really reduces the need for a car, let alone, you know, without, without going to the, you know, without, looking at the demographic that may be living in this, which as you've heard, will be most, will be entirely under 60% of middle-six county area median income, but besides that, just the, the nature and the context of this project has, continues to provide a situation where the off-street parking is not, is, basically the variance is still appropriate in our opinion, given the context here. So there's no changes to the number of parking spaces on the site. The one aspect of the project which our engineer did just go into is the hash change where we are requiring, I guess, this was a variance that was previously granted for maximum impervious coverage, which in 2017 was granted to permit 83% where 60% is permitted, we are now proposing 91% where 60% is permitted, so that is an increase on the site. You know, in my opinion, this is, this is really just, is due to the reconfiguration of the building, wherein the building has been pushed away from the flood zone, and also the height of the building, the ground floor has been shifted, and this results in a smaller, smaller areas of impervious coverage that were previously on-site closer to the front yards. So that has been reduced, but in return, the applicant is proposing a nice south-facing terrace that will provide outdoor space, and there's a comprehensive stormwater management plan in place, and most importantly, it's providing a much, a better protection of both the culvert and the future residents of the site in case of the flood emergency going forward. So in that sense, you know, it better meets the flood hazard rules, and it's, it's also been modified, you know, to the current rules of today. So, you know, in my opinion, that variance can be granted under the C2 criteria in which the benefits outweigh the detriments there. This is basically a site that is an apparently beneficial use, is 100% affordable senior housing, and the variance that we're requesting here tonight, you know, really furthers the production of that apparently beneficial use. Anything that, any impacts of the increase in impervious coverage have been mitigated by the changes in stormwater management plan and the engineering and architectural features that you've heard tonight, and I believe that the, that granting of that variance would promote several purposes of zoning. Again, this is on the furtherance of 100% affordable projects, so promotes public health, safety, and general welfare, it establishes a population density at an appropriate location, this is a site that was previously used for something very similar, and it will continue to be in an updated manner that is generally represent a better condition than what was previously there, although at this point that was over 10 years ago. It promotes senior citizen housing construction, which is purpose L of the MOUL, and it also provides creative development techniques and enhances the aesthetics of the area. So in conclusion, you know, we are requesting that one variance that is technically new, all the others, we believe, are, you know, are really continuing because of the overall proposed project taken as a whole. So, you know, I don't believe there'll be any substantial detriment to the public good or substantial impacts to your city's zone plan as a result of the new impervious coverage variance, and as stated, it could be justified in accordance with the C2 criteria. So I don't have anything further to add.
I know further questions for Mr. Keller, if there are any questions for the right man.
Any member of the board or professional, any questions for this witness? Same enough.
Mr. Chairman, that completes our presentation.
All right. At this time, I would like to open it up to the public, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Please state your name, by your last name for the record.
Charlie Cratovil, C R A T O V I L.
Charlie Cratovil, do you swear to, do you swear or tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do. Good evening, members of the board. Pleased to see affordable housing moving forward, but like so many projects in New Brunswick, I'll believe it when I see it, and I did want to ask about a few of the comments that were made today. So first of all, Mr. Kelso said, quote, "The financing is in place." My understanding from the testimony that they scrapped the idea of using low-income housing tax credits, is that correct?
That's not accurate, that's not what the test was.
No, the, the project secured an allocation of 9% tax credits in 2019, and when Mr. Kelso mentioned the financing is in place, that's because the financing at that time was in place, the costs since have increased. We have secured other financing, we have that financing in place, we are currently in the process of closing on that financing while we redesign the project.
Okay, so forgive me for the misunderstanding, they did secure low-income housing tax credits, and those are still good to use?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I heard about federal home loan bank money, and I heard an aspiration to use the EDAs Aspire program, I want to be clear, that funding is not in place yet, the Aspire program is not in place.
That funding has not been fully committed to the project, it's an available source that's not competitive, and we're in the process of applying for it now.
Okay, so there's application in process. I guess what I'm getting at is, when can the residents of New Brunswick finally get the promised replacement for Hoffman Pavilion? As has been said, this was meant to not expand affordable housing, but replace affordable housing that was demolished 12 years ago. Is there a timeline for construction to start, and is there a timeline for the building to open?
We're currently scheduled, assuming that we are able to get this approval and move forward with the current design that we have for this project, we're looking to close on the financing in the first half of next year, and then we would start construction, it would be about a 14-month process, so we're looking at the second half of 2024 for completion, and that's when, that's when leasing would start.
Okay. I don't know if it would be appropriate for the board to put any kind of requirements or conditions that would force them to do this on time.
I object to that, that's beyond the scope of the zoning board's authority to do the UK place limitation, we have rights by law and to the statute for approvals.
I just, I just know this has taken way, way longer than it should have, and not for nothing, the developer has received public monies for this project, you know, over a million dollars, much of it was spent to demolish the prior building, but I believe there was also a loan in the amount of $274,000 from the housing authority that was supposed to be repaid at the time the development closes on financing. We just heard they didn't close on financing, so they still have that loan, right? Are they going to pay back the loan?
Yeah, I'll give Charlie latitude, but this isn't really appropriate for the zoning board to, to answer these questions, or for us to answer these questions, we're with the board. This has nothing to do with the manuse application. I'm giving them latitude, but only to a point.
Penrose, as part of the master development agreement for Hoffman, did enter into loans with the housing authority for the use of the demolition, relocation, remediation of the property at the point in time that the financing closes, which I mentioned is anticipated for the first half of next year, those funds will be repaid.
They will be repaid at the time of closing, glad to hear that, and I do want to thank Mr. Freiberg for answering some of my questions back in 2017 when I reached out to Penrose via email to figure out, you know, just how much had already gone into this project. Can I learn a little bit about how much rent folks are going to pay? I heard there's three different types of units, public housing, project-based vouchers, and tax credit units. Who's going to set the rents, is everybody going to be paying a percentage of their income, or how does it actually work?
I'll allow my client to answer.
Thank you.
You said, yes, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. So as I mentioned, about half of the project is supported with housing authority, what we call operating subsidy, so the public housing units are supported with public housing subsidy, which effectively subsidizes the unit or operates it at a net zero profit. So essentially, you, you break down what it costs to operate the property, whatever the resident can pay based on 30% of their income, the subsidy pays the rest so that the unit essentially breaks even from a financial perspective. That's 26 of the units, and then there's 14 units which have a project-based voucher, those residents also only pay 30% of their income, whatever that may be, whether they're very low income or moderate income, and then the project-based voucher pays what's up to called a fair market rent. That is set by HUD based on census data provided every year, so we would be, the project would be receiving that fair market rent, which helps finance the project, the residents themselves are only paying 30% of their income, so that, that subsidy is paying the difference between what the resident can pay and what the fair market rent dictated by HUD is, and that helps provide, you know, a higher rent to help finance the project. And then the other 25 units are what I mentioned as tax credit only units, they're not subsidized on the rental side by the housing authority, those individuals also pay 30% of their income towards, towards the rent, excuse me, and that's what part, sort of the definition of the affordable housing is. 60% of average median income is also based on HUD census data for Middlesex County. For the year 2022, that rent is approximately $1,462. The residents that are also given a utility allowance to help pay for their utilities so that their total housing spend is not greater than 30%, so that net number that they would pay towards the project is about $1,340.
Thank you for the thorough answers. I heard the age restriction is 55-plus, and that all of the superintendent unit that would apply to, so that's 65 total units for the community, and age 55-plus, how does that compare to the building that was there before? Was it the same number of units, or was it more units? And what was the age restriction on the prior building?
If you know, Bill.
Yeah, the previous property, I don't have the specific numbers, but it was a smaller building, it was nine floors, I believe it was in 70-plus units. As I mentioned in my earlier testimony, before the building was demolished, another property on a different site was built, and a number of residents relocated there.
Providence Square Two.
Providence Square Two, exactly, and I don't remember the specific number of units of that property, but somewhere in the 50 to 60 range, let's just say, and then we're building 60 units here, and so the idea is that you still have the same amount of public housing units, they're separated over two properties, but in total, more affordable housing than was just at that Hoffman is being provided to the city.
Thanks for explaining that, and yeah, I guess I'll just close by expressing some concern about the potential for flooding. Pleased that some efforts were made to make the, you know, the space that the building's in further away from the flood zone, but of course, we know that as the climate crisis gets worse, flooding is going to get worse, and, you know, I would just encourage the applicant, if they do follow through and build this structure there, that they have a plan for what to do when it floods, to evacuate residents if. to evacuate residents if necessary and appropriate dissemination of information and signage. I know some of the streets in this neighborhood, they have signs posted that say, "The road floods." So your car could get damaged and, you know, I think that, you know, especially for the parking area, folks should be aware that this area does flood and can flood. And, you know, I frankly wish that the project would move forward in a different location. But, you know, if it does move ahead in this location, I wish everybody the best and I hope that it can be completed soon so that, you know, we can address the housing crisis and provide affordable housing for senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public having questions for this advocate? Saying not, we're going to close the public portion. Do you want to go?
Just defer to the board.
Okay. If I could, Mr. Kelso, define spelling out exactly the change in variances that you're asking the board to go.
The change in the?
Well, they're voting on it. We'll call it an amendment to your existing.
Yes.
So it's better, probably best to stress that.
Yeah, well, the, so it's only the ones that are changing. Because the use is the same. The parking is the same. So the FAR is being reduced from 3.7 to 3.2. The height is actually being lowered to 66 feet from 71. The lot width and lot depth remain the same. The minimum front yard with regard to Nielsen Street is actually, the front yard is being increased so the variance is being decreased. It's now 1.9 feet versus 1.3. The front yard setback on Hillibrand Way is actually being increased and therefore the variance is being decreased from 1.1 to 1.7. The maximum building coverage is being reduced at the variance from 63% to 61%. And finally, the maximum impervious coverage variance is the one that is being increased. The previous application approved 83% impervious coverage. And this is now being requested to be increased at 91%. And I believe I covered it all.
Yes. Thank you. So if there's a motion made to approve those variances you just described?
Yep.
Dan, do you have a condition if there was a?
Mr. Chairman?
I want to ask a question perhaps of both the attorneys. Is it the intent of the applicant or in this application that if this application's approved, the prior one is vacated? Or we have two, or are we going to have two?
No, under the law, an approval of a subsequent claim does not eliminate the approval from the previous. But for the record, the applicant intends to build this plan, which is why we're getting the approval for this. And once you build it, then the other, it doesn't matter.
But anytime he will be able to go back and use the prior plan under the law as you just described it, correct?
Yes, but I don't think in fairness we would do that unless we notified the board, notified you, because that's not the intent. The intent is for this plan, because as we mitigate, it gets a better plan.
Just want to clarify for the purpose of words.
I understand.
Thank you. Dan, please look at the conditions if we urgently go approve.
All right, so just one little comment as I'm missing a date here. Hank, what is the most recent Bignell plan report that we have or the data?
Yeah, July 25th.
July 25th, is that?
22. It's a second planning review.
All right, so July 25th, 2022?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so should the board act favorably? The following conditions would apply. Compliance with the terms of the city engineering report dated June 24, 2022. Pre-construction meeting, the applicant shall schedule a construction, a pre-construction meeting with city engineering department. Compliance with the terms of the Bignell consulting group report dated July 25, 2022. And that's it. And all prior conditions from the prior approval should be necessary too.
All right, thank you. Do you have a motion?
I made a motion to approve.
It's Mimi, yes?
Approved.
Johnson and Sherman?
Yes.
Michael Toplin?
Yes.
Paul Voss?
Yes.
Matt Burson?
Yes.
John House?
Yes.
I thank you very much for your patience. Thanks for letting us in, Dan.